8, 2022 Wichita Board of Education meeting. We appreciate you here in attendance and those watching on your screens. The Wichita Public Schools will attempt to be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Tonight, our pledge of allegiance is led by Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jacob Berry, Cadet Captain Jonah Beek, Second Lieutenant Nirvana Jaras. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? He may post the colors.
Thank you. Sir, order colors. In front, heads. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms, holocaust, honor.
A round of applause for the Heights JROTC. We do have a quorum tonight with Julie Hedrick on remote tonight. Julie, can you hear us?
I can hear fine. Thank you for letting me join remotely while I'm on vacation in Colorado.
Thank you, Julie. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under reports, good news.
Good evening, President Reeser, Dr. Thompson, members of the board. I am so excited to be here with you tonight as we kick off the school year and recognize students. So while I'm speaking, I'm going to have Principal Hofer-Holderman and the Northwest crew go ahead and come on down. At the very end of the school year this past year, it was really cool to see two groups of students from the Wichita Public Schools, from Northwest High School, recognized nationally, nationally, for their work. And when I say national recognition, there was a first prize or first place finish in the country, and there was a third place finish in the country. And I'm just a little giddy about it because it's the kind of work my team does. So in case you wonder whether we're trying to hire these young people that we're celebrating tonight, yes, we are. As interns, they would be glorious interns. But I am pleased to have Principal Eric Hofer-Holdman from Northwest High School here to introduce you to two groups of students that were recognized by the National Business Professionals of America. So without further ado, he will introduce you to the friends that he brought with him and allow us to celebrate our students as we kick off the school year.
Welcome, Eric.
Superintendent Thompson, President Reeser, Board of Education members, as Ms. Johnson mentioned, my name is Eric Hofer-Holdman. I'm the proud principal of Northwest High School. And as you mentioned, back in May, we had five students travel to a national competition in BPA and a first place and a third place. I'm not going to steal his thunder. I'm going to turn it over right away to our sponsor, Shane Monroe. So if you'll welcome Shane Monroe.
Welcome, Shane.
Thank you. Good evening. It is a special, special night. I think it's important for everybody involved because, number one, the students that we have, yes, if we have community members who are business owners and maybe we have colleges who are out there, and you want to give money or you want to hire these people, I'm telling you, you're not going to find a better group of students. The Business Professional Students of America, the members that we have, and it's not just Elijah, I'm telling you, it's the entire group of students that we have. Mr. Hofer-Holdman, if you walk through the halls at Northwest High School, pride, respect, and excellence. It's been communicated since the day the school was built, and every single day, Mr. Hofer-Holdman continues to preach pride, respect, and excellence. And it resonates with the students, it resonates with the staff, that when we do something, you're going to be proud of it. You're going to respect people, and we want excellence, okay? So to take you, to understand a little bit about what BPA is, it's under this career and technical education realm, okay? It's a CTSO. Some of the other ones you may have heard of, maybe like DECA, FFA, those are other examples. With MBPA, we've tried to strive, our students who are striving for professions and careers in business management, finance, IT, careers that are in demand, okay? We are members, when they go through the hall, when they participate in BPA, we look for ways for them to participate professionally, civically, service, and they also participate in other social endeavors, okay? Last year, we had 10 members in our BPA. Within those 10 members, over 400 hours of community service were provided by those students. That's something to be proud of. In addition, at the holiday time, our students found a group of, a family who was in need. The family was a large family. There was a young child in that family who had some serious health situations. They didn't have enough to provide for their family. And so this group, they went out and they say, we want to buy stuff for this family. We want to adopt them. And so I sent the students out to go shop, and they didn't just come back with a few bags. They didn't come back with a trunk full of stuff for this family. They came carloads of trunks for this family, and we delivered it on the last day of school right before Christmas break. That's something to be proud of. But they continue on because then through state participation in BPA, we go on, and all 10 members who are part of our chapter qualified to attend the National Leadership Conference. And it's not easy to do, okay? In all my years of being through BPA, I've never had any student even go to the, get called up as a top 10 participant. This year, we had a third place finish. We had our seniors, a group in broadcast news journalism. The time and effort that these students put in is phenomenal. The things that they learn, the things that they create, it's mind-blowing. We also, we had the third place finish. We also had Elijah Gigan, who was a sophomore at the time, and his partner, Hansel Wynn. Hansel couldn't join us tonight. I think it's important to know, Hansel Wynn, fantastic student as well, he was actually displaced from the Hurricane Ida. So he was, he came from us in the middle of the semester and jumped right in. And, you know, kind of our group leader, Elijah here, took him in with open arms and said, come be a part of our team. So that's Business Professionals of America at Northwest.
President Reeser, any questions for Elijah or any of the others? Ernestine?
I would like to ask Elijah, where do you go from here?
Well, we're planning on going back next year. That's where we're going. BPA, the stuff doesn't get released until September to start planning our video again, but it was a long process. We had the regional, state, and then national, so there were three drafts of our videos. So we'll do that all over again with a new topic. This year, it was on esports, so we're hoping to get a new topic this year that will be just as interesting.
So you had, the video was your field. So what is your field that you want to go into after schools, after high school?
Probably medical. I'm going to be, hopefully, a pediatrician.
Is video going to be any part of that?
Probably a side hobby.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. So are you saying that we won number one and number three?
Yes. So with MBPA and the competitions, there's 50 different competitions, whether, some students might participate in accounting on an individual basis. These were actually teams, and so there's different video competitions. One of our competitions was a broadcast news production team, and so they create a broadcast news production. Elijah and his partner, they were what's called video production team, and they're given a topic. And last year's topic was to create like a persuasive video why we should integrate esports into our high schools. And that's what they got first place. And so one of the things, once you actually go to the national competition, you get there with your original video, but then, once you get to the national competition, you're given a small timeframe to actually go and create another video. So that's what, it kind of keeps it on the up and up. So, you know, it truly showcases the talents of the students who are participating.
They have talent from their parents.
Exactly, exactly.
First and third.
We had a first-place national champion and a third-place finish.
I want to stand up for that.
Appreciate that report. Patrick, next item. Yes, Julie?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
No, you're fine.
I wanted to say this particularly warms my heart because, many years ago, when my mother was still alive, she was the person at Wichita State University that placed student teachers in our high school business program for Wichita Public Schools. So I know that she just is smiling down from heaven on this report, is just very excited, so it just tickles me and warms my heart. So congratulations to these great students, and congratulations to their teachers.
Thank you, Julie. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under reports, Service Employees International.
I do not see ESaw, so we will skip to the next item.
Next item, under reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Brent.
Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Hedrick in beautiful Colorado, Dr. Thompson and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and it was a greater pleasure a week ago to greet our new staff members at New Staff Orientation. It's such a great event, there's great energy, see all the new people coming in that are going to be our colleagues. It's just wonderful. And it's great to be back in schools this week with colleagues getting ready for the students to return. Now, earlier in the summer, we expressed our desire to see a fair, transparent process for BOE redistricting, and we continue to express this expectation for our community. We also appreciate that you have been listening to our concerns about school safety, and we are eager to see progress on secured, supervised main entryways at our buildings, all of them, most of them I know are absolutely. Also, interior door locks for our classrooms and offices in schools. Finally, I want to express my eagerness for our Behavior Work Group. We are going to collaborate with your team and Service Employees International to work together to meet the challenges that our students face and our certified and classified staff face in our buildings, and I think that collaboration moving forward is very important. Here's to a fantastic school year. Good evening.
Thank you, Brent. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Public Communications.
We have five members of the public signed up tonight. We will start off with Brandon Johnson. Welcome, Councilman.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Superintendent, members of the Board of Education. My name is Brandon Johnson. I reside in Board of Education District Number One. I stand before you today not only as a voter, but a father of kids who are in USD 259, as a graduate of 259 in the best high school in the city of Wichita Northeast Magnet, and as an elected official. I just want to start by saying I do have some deep concerns about this body's support of MAP 3. Minimizing black voices within Northeast Wichita is something that definitely concerns me. As I have watched and participated in redistricting activities recently, I know that each governing body has a great deal of work to do to ensure as close to equal representation as possible, but also to ensure that communities of interest are not separated by redistricting activities. Those communities of interest tend to include neighborhoods, homeowners' associations, immigrant communities, and specifically, communities of color. And I feel that if one has done the work to represent these communities, they also understand that where these communities are and how we should be protecting them. In short, I am confident that there were other ways to uphold our constitutional duty to redistrict while not separating some of the black voices out of District One. While that decision has unfortunately already been made, one decision you have before you tonight to discuss has not. I would encourage this body to right, in my opinion, a wrong that happened on November 8th, 1994, when a majority of voters within the district boundaries approved Voting Plan B that allowed for citizens throughout the boundaries of USD 259 to cast votes for every seat on the ballot and the general. As you know, since you serve here, that the Public School Board consists of seven members elected to four-year terms, six of those representing districts, the seventh living anywhere as an at-large member, and that primary elections for these seats are held by the district, but it's the general election that is district-wide for all seats. I'd argue that needs to change. This needs to be added to the ballot to this year for an opportunity for voters to choose what's best for them. I think that the Board of Education should be just like the City Council, County Commission, and Legislature, where voters of that specific district should have the opportunity to vote for their specific district and not have folks outside of that district weigh in on who represents them. Further, some of you know my former opponent in 2017, former School Board Member Mike Kennard. Also, former School Board Member Betty Arnold have also said that this should change, and this should be district voting and not district-wide voting. If my math is correct, District One hasn't had a candidate that voted for in either of the last two elections. The person who won the district lost the race. And my hope is that each of you clearly understand the deeper issue of a district not having the person they voted for, but rather the person they voted against representing them. And I know that each of you probably wouldn't like that. And I'm also confident that if given the opportunity, the majority of those who reside within USD 259 would agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next speaker is Sandra Rankin. And I apologize, I should have reminded everyone how long they had. It's three minutes. Welcome, Sandra.
Get this now.
Brandon's a little tall, huh?
Yes, compared to me. Okay. Good evening, Superintendent, Dr. Alicia Thompson, Board of Education President, Mr. Stan Reeser, and other Board of Education members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I am Sandra Rankin, and as a retired school psychologist from the Wichita Public Schools, serving as the Wichita Branch NAACP Education Chair, I would also like to thank you for your time spent representing the students and families in the Wichita Public Schools. This evening, I am addressing the Wichita Board of Education again because of voting and representation concerns. I previously addressed the Board of Education on this area of concern November 8th, 2021. As I indicated, in the past general election, I found there was confusion in all districts among voters about the number of Board of Education candidates to be on their ballot. There was a total of 10 candidates for the four Board of Education indicated positions. In my Neighborhood Association monthly scheduled one-hour meeting, we invited the two District One City Council candidates to make presentations and answer questions. Because of our timed meeting, we couldn't invite the 10 Board of Education candidates that were on the same ballot for District One. Although Board of Education members work for all students, they represent a certain district, and only that district should vote for them in the general election. The districts deserve this. We are now concerned about voting procedures and boundary changes. However, if the voting procedure isn't changed, the boundary changes won't affect the elections because everyone will still be voting for all districts. I strongly feel there would be a better turnout and less confusion about voting and representation if the Wichita Board of Education general election was by district and aligned with the Wichita City Council procedure to only vote for your representative and the at-large representative when indicated. Also, advertisement for all Board of Education candidates except the at-large candidates would be less expensive. As a retired Wichita Public School educator, I appreciate your consideration of this request, which affects our Wichita Board of Education general election procedure. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Titus James. Welcome, Titus.
Thank you. Good evening. Madam Superintendent, President Reeser, members of the board, God bless you. I'm Reverend Titus James, former pastor of the North East Christian Church, retired of the 41 years of service there, and I'm glad to be here tonight to express my concerns over the future of the life of this school. Having resided in this city for 41 years, after moving from Berkeley, California, I observed the city and saw a lot of things that were really strange, different, and challenging, coming from an environment like California, but I felt to settle in the city and do what I can to help. I did it all those years I've been here, and I'm still troubled by the way things are coming into shape for this future of the schools. I'm concerned about the boundaries. I wish I knew the clear, transparent goals of the binary structure. Why are you designing it this way? What's the goal you're trying to achieve with those designs? I'm also concerned about the equity of the populations within those districts. And also, if we are not sure why you're drawing it that way, why is it happening so fast and so certain? When we have boundaries that are confusing or changes that are taking place suddenly, people lose, they get confused, they lose interest and trust. We need to maintain a stronger sense of community in our city, and I think by having transparency, clear goals stated, simple goals stated, we can build that in our community. I'm also concerned about district elections. I was glad to see district elections come on board when we had the City Council set up for those districts and now for the School Board, but to have citywide district elections following the district elections, it dilutes the power of the people in the district. If I vote for a candidate and they win, I feel I have power. I feel I have a chance to participate more boldly, more cheerfully, and more consistently. But if my candidate, who I vote in, won, the district loses with the citywide election, I'm upset. I'm trying to figure, well, why? If I lose my power, lose my vote, I also sense I lose my purpose to participate and enjoy education, helping to support the education system in this city. If I see my voice, my vote, just taken away. Citywide elections for the district person dilutes the power of the people. Are you pleased with participation from the parents across the city? Are you pleased with the discipline of our students in our schools across the city? These things can change if we have people who are glad to participate within the district system. By having pure district election, we have to promote pure and joyful participation of the citizens within those districts. We need their participation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our fourth speaker is Lawwanda DeShazer. Welcome, Lawwanda.
Thank you. Again, I'm Lawwanda DeShazer, and I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. I do have a little speech written down, but I'm not going to read it. So I graduated from Wichita Public Schools. My kids graduated. My son attended college on a football and academic scholarship as a product of Wichita Public Schools. I have four mentees in high school right now that I'm working with. I belong to a youth football organization. WPS has helped us over summer programs to help improve their grades. And I'm saying all that to say this, the black vote matters. When you look at all your data and your statistics, systematically, we're always at the bottom of the totem pole. And I really feel that by disenfranchising the vote, we take away the voice of the people to say, we need better, we need more. And when we have a representative over our district, no offense, but if you are not from our community and our district, you don't always understand the needs that we have. And I understand that the district board, the board members, you're looking out for the entire school district. I get that. But there are special needs that I believe each district can articulate, and if you don't have somebody from your district that can articulate the special needs of your district, our kids are going to miss out. And so with that said, please go back and let's vote for board members district-wide. And so that way, we not only get the individual needs, we get the collective needs of all of our students. So let's let the voices of the people be heard, and let's vote by district in our upcoming elections. And 10 years from now, when we do district maps again, please don't forget your stakeholders. Don't be in such a rush to pass these maps. Make sure your stakeholders are at the table so that we all can have a voice in the future of our young people. So thank you for your time, and I hope that we move to district elections so that the students can get the proper representation that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawwanda. We've got one more speaker, and then if anybody wants to conclude, yeah.
Do you have a question for her specifically?
No, I don't have, I just want to make a statement.
Yeah, oh, and it's on our agenda too, so you can also save it for that time too, but either way is fine. Our fifth speaker is Mark Ritchie. Welcome, Mark.
Welcome. Glad to be here. Good to see you. Good to see all of you. Beautiful day today, wasn't it? Unusual for August, nice and cool, no breeze. President Reeser, members of the board, Superintendent Thompson, my name is Mark Ritchie, and I live at 4700 West 13th North here in Wichita. I wish to speak to you tonight about the method used to elect members of the Board of Education. I am opposed to the method of nomination and election currently used to conduct BOE elections. Nomination by district followed by citywide election can easily lead to a distortion of the board. Individual districts can lose their representation on the board. I believe that members of the BOE should be chosen by being nominated and then elected by the voters in a single district. Requiring that nominees for the School Board conduct citywide elections helps assure that a candidate with the greatest citywide resources, such as money, support from groups motivated by a few issues, or membership in a political party, will be elected. As has happened, groups can throw their citywide resources for chosen candidates and overwhelm candidates with fewer citywide resources, even even when those candidates are favored by the voters in the BO districts they are supposed to represent. This happened in the most recent election, when the Republican Party openly supported a group of four candidates. Three of the four were elected to the board with control of the supposedly nonpartisan BOE coming close to being under the dominant political party in this area. If we continue to use this method of choosing and then electing members of the board, then in the next election, this will happen again. Next time, there will be three positions to fill. A narrowly focused group will need only to fill one of those positions to gain a majority of the school board. A tactic that could be used to overwhelm the wishes of the voters in a district is bullet voting. A group could tell its supporters to vote for only one of the candidates. This would make sure that the chosen candidate would come out numerically ahead, regardless of his or her support in a particular district. After that, BO decisions will reflect the wishes of this group, regardless of the desires or wishes of the voters who live in the affected districts. You can take action now to correct a mistake that was made years ago. Support bringing pure district elections to our school district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Diane, did you want to make a comment now, or did you want to wait till the agenda item comes up?
I'd prefer to make a comment right now.
Go ahead, Diane.
To address a few things that were stated during the public comment. First off, I just want to clear and clarify, because I've read a number of things online, and a few things have been brought up this evening, that it is assumed that I do not understand District One and I don't understand the needs of District One. Please do not let the color of my skin let you judge by that decision. I feel that's a very racist assumption. I grew up at 13th and Oliver from birth to graduation. I'm very familiar with the needs of District One. I have lived in District One almost my entire life. So, to make the assumption that because of the way I look, I don't understand the needs of District One is very offensive to me. I reach out and talk to anybody and everybody. Talking about the district maps, I specifically reached out to NAACP. Larry Burks and I go very far back in our history. We've known each other for a very long time. We have a very good working relationship. So, to make the assumption that the black community's voice will not be heard because I am white, sitting in this seat, is very, very offensive. And if I'm mischaracterizing that, please come up and let me know. My contact information is online, and I would love to continue to have conversations with anybody and everybody about this issue. So, please save my number. Please contact me, and we'll sit down and have coffee and have a conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Any other opening comments? But like I said, this is on our agenda, so we'll have plenty of time to discuss. Okay. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, consent.
I'll start on the interior this time. I have no consent items to pull. Julie, do you have any consent items to pull?
I have nothing to pull. Thank you, Dan.
Diane?
No.
Ernestine?
Yes, I would. I would like to have it discussed and explained. C, under consent, where there's program grants about accelerated academies.
I'm going to find that item. C1. Kathy, any items to pull?
Yes, C5 and C2.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that one more time?
C5 and C2.
And C2 is Elementary School Studies 4th Grade Textbook, and 5 is...
Restorative Practices.
Thank you. Cheryl?
I have nothing to pull this evening. Thank you.
Hazel?
B4, Interactive Flat Panels.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, except for C1, C5, C2, and B4.
I second that.
Second by Ernestine, moved by Stan. All those at the table, raise your hand by voting if you vote yes. Julie, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Ernestine, C1.
I would, I am interested in having an explanation given to us and to the public, and especially to teachers, about this Acceleration Academies Student Realignment Services renewal.
Thank you for your question. I'm going to ask my colleague who supports this program to give a thorough explanation.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson, President Reese, members of the board. Our Acceleration Academies was a response to the ESAR funding and learning loss. How do we accelerate learning, especially those during the pandemic that did not graduate or were choosing to drop out? We created, knowing that we rebranded our Education Imagine Academy for those that also needed some online. This particular program is actually in-person and does allow for some counseling opportunities, also some career and goal-setting with Acceleration Academies, but we used it as part of our 20% ESAR funding in order to combat our learning loss or unfinished learning. A lot of our students during that time did not graduate, so this particular program is actually calling and going out to homes and letting our students know that did not graduate to say, "Hey, there's an opportunity that may not be the traditional setting that some may not have been able to do, but this is an opportunity for Acceleration Academies to bring them in, work at their own pace, and to gain the credits necessary in order for them to graduate." So, this is a very, we would say, those students that may not have finished, when you talk about Tier 3 students or students that are at risk and thought that they didn't have an opportunity now due through this opportunity with our Wichita Acceleration Academies.
Can we have a, can we have a report, say, in January, probably February or March, about how many of those students actually did gain some extra credits? Not extra credits, but some of their credits that they hadn't gotten before?
And I do have some data for you now. So, if you look at interest forms for that, that if students are interested, there's 285 students as of today that show an interest. Now, we do have a process because we want to make sure that the students that may be just one or two credits shy still can go back and get their diplomas through their normal comprehensive high school, if that's what they choose. Some of our students that we go back and get, they may only have two credits, and they may be a junior or senior with two credits. This particular program allows them to work at their pace to either faster or even slower, depending on what they're doing, specifically around their work schedule and so on. So, there's that opportunity. So, in process, we have 46 students that are in process of registering for Acceleration Academies. We have 143 students currently enrolled. In total courses completed, we have 189 courses that are already completed. And understand that this program, even though we, at the beginning of this past year, it actually didn't get really up and running till February. So, as of February till May, we did have two graduates already for students that didn't think they were going to graduate, but we brought them back, and they did graduate. So, we have a lot of, the total courses obviously completed was 189, and then unique courses completed is 82. So, ever since we started, we've seen a momentum of increase of our students that are interested and working in Acceleration Academies. So, we are excited at the momentum that we currently have with them and looking forward to the same thing going into this year, if it is approved today.
That's exciting, and you probably know enough about me to know that I really like it when kids can move at their own pace and can have a decision of their own to say, "I want to accomplish this and this and this." So, this is exciting. I do want to have a report. And I'm excited that we're going and helping to get those kids to come back and know that they can get some credits. Thank you.
Okay. Ernestine, if, I just wanted to make, if you want a report, I'm assuming that's going to take more than two hours. It wouldn't take that long?
We have given the report. That would be our report, is the numbers that we shared. We made sure that we had all the information about how many students, the credits that we recovered. We also have given you kind of an overview of the program, so...
All I'm looking for is an update after, you know, sometime in the early spring.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then when we get to board requests, I think I'll ask you to put that down in writing, too.
Okay. We'd be happy to do that, once we go get further in, to show the progress that is being made with the students this year.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I move that we accept, what am I saying?
Approved.
C1.
I second it.
All those at the table, raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. Julie, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Motion carries 7-0. Kathy, I think we'll start with C2, if that's okay.
Thank you. Gil, you don't need to come up. I'll save you the trip. I just wanted to say, I requested to look at these books for our 4th graders, and I'm very impressed. They are books of the regions of our country, and they talk more, they talk agriculture. They talk a lot of different things that I think our 4th graders, they start getting into the history. And I just wanted to let everyone know that I have reviewed these, and these are awesome. Thank you, Gil. I move that we accept the Lifeland Brands 4th Grade Textbooks.
Moved by Kathy, seconded by Cheryl. Those at the table approving the motion, raise your hand. Julie, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Can I abstain?
There is no...
No abstention?
There is no abstaining.
Oh, well, I'll vote yes then, but I wanted to have a chance to look at the books.
Okay. Motion carries 7-0. Kathy, C5.
Thank you. Restorative Practices, is Rob here, or is there someone here that can?
Any of us could answer.
Any of you. Okay, okay, yes. The language in the purpose is not aligned with the language when we initially heard about restorative practices. I am not against restorative practices at all. Anything to help our teachers and our students, I think, is valuable. What I would like to ask, though, is how will this, the purpose of this, gain achievement academically for our students?
Okay, so, I would agree with you. This is a different type of deal. The one we brought to you before, the language was for the company that we use to help us with restorative practices. This particular item is for a consultant, Mr. Rob Simon. So, that is why the language is different. However, the purpose still remains the same as what we discussed for many meetings before, which is, restorative practices is a kind of a way of operating, per se. It makes sure that all students, all staff are included in all aspects of this organization. So, instead of doing things to people, we're doing things with people. We're creating an environment where people are open and able to give feedback. And so, that is the environment that we're trying to build within the school district. And what we believe is, when that environment is right for teachers, for students, for families, that we're going to see improvement all the way around. So, that's what the restorative practices is about. Mr. Simon, who is on this contract here, his name is Rob Simon, and what we're using him for is, as the district is learning, I'll give an example that was used today. So, we have a group that we needed to be in a restorative circle. And because the leader of that organization was new and could not really fully do the circles to get the outcome that she was looking for, she actually utilized and will be utilizing Mr. Simon to come in and actually facilitate and walk them through that circle and model for them. And so, as the district continues to grow with restorative practices, as you know, we've spent quite a bit of money on restorative practices. And so, we'll spend more on that to ensure that all of our staff and students and, I mean, when I say all of the faculty, I'm talking about from the district level to what, all levels of the organization will participate in this. And we will use this to create an environment, as I stated before. And we believe that this is a, he is going to help us to be able to keep us rolling and model for us and allow us to have kind of the expert when the experts are gone. When the restorative company is gone and they're coming in periodically on those times when they're not here, we'll use Mr. Simon alongside of Jan Peterson as well, who also is just an employee with us. And so, she will also be part of the resources that will be available to us for restorative practices.
So, when we approved this, we approved the $300,000 for this program. This is a renewal, then, right now, or is this just for Mr. Simon? The $30,000 that he is going to be training our staff and our educators? Now, is there going to be another $30,000 in three or four months that's going to be asked from us?
No, this is a renewal for him. He's been doing this work for us for approximately, it's been a while before my time. So, he's been working with the school district in this capacity for quite a while. So, it should have been a renewal on here, but it was not, so that's our error. So, he's been doing this for a while, and so he would only ask for this once a year. So, this would not be something, this $30,000 would not be something that you would see again. But I'm going to repeat, so we're clear. You will see restorative practices come back up again from the company, the original company, again in the spring, so that we can be preparing again for training that we will do in the fall and throughout the following school term.
And when did restorative practices enter into 259?
Oh, wow. It was at West High School.
It was about 19, about 1990.
About 1990.
32 years.
Excuse me, about 2,000, about 2,000.
Oh, 2,000.
Okay, yeah. I wasn't, I don't know. Yeah, I just know that it started at West High School some years ago, and I won't give you a specific year, because I really don't know, but I know it's been a while. And it has just kind of grown momentum within the system to the point where we believe that a systemic approach is something that is needed.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ernestine?
One of the things that, you could almost see Rob Simon as an individual tutor for an individual teacher, so that they get trained in the mass, and these are for teachers. He doesn't work with the kids. But a teacher says, "I've got this situation." And Rob is, or Dr. Peterson, Dr. Jan Peterson, are the ones that you can call and cry on. I found out about three or four years ago about this program, and I called Rob and I called Jan to get some information. And that's where I found out about this fantastic pilot that had started at West High. And that was just such an impressive program, and the way that it changed everything from within, that Rob is, this is not even as much money as a beginning teacher that this is asking for. But he is like an inside our house emergency, you know, call and say, "Come help me out. I need to know how to do this."
Thank you. I make a motion to pass and to vote on this.
Approve the recommended action.
I second it.
Moved by Kathy, seconded by Ernestine. All those at the table approving the motion, raise your hand. Julie, how do you vote?
I have, I vote yes. I've known Rob for a long time. I've been very familiar with the great work that he's done, and I'm very supportive of this contract, so I vote yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 7-0. Last item is B4, the Interactive Flat Panels Phase 2. Hazel?
Hi. My question is, we're doing Interactive Flat Panels Phase 2, and we are voting on $2,950,000 for Phase 2. How many phases do we have in this project?
I'm going to invite my colleague down, Mr. Rob Dixon, who is the expert in this particular area, and he can answer any questions you may have.
Sure. Rob Dixon, Chief Information Officer. Probably four to five phases. It honestly depends upon the amount of money each year that we put into the phases. We'll start Phase 2 with the 12 Vills for Resident Innovative Learning Middle Schools, East High and Colvin, because East High, with their expansion project, we tested them there, as well as we tested them at Colvin to find out size ranges, right, how high it should be. And so... And so we'll go ahead and finish out those two schools, as well as the 12 Verizon Innovative Learning Middle Schools. Mainly those 12 Vills Middle Schools, because we have a Verizon Innovative Learning coach in those buildings, so they can help make sure that they're all implemented correctly and taught in the classroom and.
So are we looking at, for the next three or four phases, the same amount of money, or are we projected to be spending 2.9 million every?
It may vary just a little bit, but it'll be similar cost, yes.
Okay. What is the lifespan of the boards?
So they have a documented lifespan of about 20 years. There's a five-year warranty on the device. The OS on the device is very similar to your, your iPhone. It's based upon Android, which is owned by Google, so updates won't cost anything, even beyond the five years. It's really based upon the, the device, and that device will over-the-air update, just like your iPhone does. And there's an app store, that's basically the Google App Store. You can download Teams, Word, PowerPoint, you know. The one big thing for a teacher that I think is amazing about this is those things you don't think about. Like a teacher, especially if they have a sub come in, I, as a teacher, don't have to release my device for that sub. I can basically log into that interactive flat panel, into PowerPoint, into Word, and have those resources available for that sub, to where that person already has everything ready, so there are a lot of efficiencies that come across with this device.
Okay, and you said there's a five-year warranty on it?
Mm-hmm.
After the five years, what, do you anticipate what the cost will be to maintain the boards?
Um, they're, they're made really well. DLT will tell you, whenever we were showing them, I, I punched a couple of the boards, you know, just with a good solid punch. They're made very well, made for a classroom. I don't anticipate very many repair costs that come with these. Just because if it's going to last 20 years, it, it should be made pretty sturdy.
And so you said that these boards are upgradable, and they're, it'll be an instant upgrade, right, and at no cost?
It's over the air, right, over wireless.
And finally, I noticed on here that it said something about remote learning. Is this, are these boards encouraging a movement towards remote learning, or is it just an enhance?
No, I would say it encourages just collaboration, more than anything else. That board, just like I said with that sub, that board allows that teacher to remove themselves from that device. Like, the Surface Pro allowed our teachers to walk around with the Surface Pro in their hand, right? They could wirelessly display, but now those students can interact with that board, and that teacher can monitor and interact if they choose to, to do so. It also allows us to display content from nine different devices at one time. So I can split-screen that device nine times and show student work and model activity. None of those things are available today. So I would say it's more of a, an encouragement of collaboration in digital literacy, which is something that we're trying to address here in Wichita Public Schools.
And is it something that the teachers have to be trained to use, or is it pretty self?
We have self-videos. Those folks that are self-learners, we have a site already dedicated. They can see the rollout in real time, you know, what dates they're being installed in their particular building. There's some self-help videos. But there's also on that site a place that they can request individual training, as well as group training, that will happen at their building. So there'll be, I would say, even as a district, we're looking at professional development differently. I think it happens both in a self-improvement model, a school or group model, and then a district-wide model like restorative practices.
Okay, so we're talking about 750 classrooms receiving this, and when will, when will they be installed before?
Yeah, so any other year other than after a pandemic, I could tell you very clearly what the supply chain will look like. I'm probably confident in about 300 a month. So we could get through several of those devices probably within by the end of the semester here for installation. There's a lot of logistics that go into that, though, because we're removing an old projector and an old smartboard, so even though those might not be available at that time, the logistics of the movement of installation and de-installation will take some time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Is there a motion you'd want to make?
Yes, I didn't know if anybody had any questions. I'd like to move that we vote on the interactive flat panels Phase 2.
Moved by Hazel, seconded by Kathy. Those at the table approve the motion, raise your hand. Julie, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Motion carries seven zero. That is the conclusion of the consent agenda. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, policy, second review, proposed revisions to facilities and building program policies.
Uh, this item has been before the board, before, this is the second and final reading of these policy changes. Are there any questions, concerns, or revisions? Julie, do you have any?
I do not.
I move that we adopt the board, the revisions of these two policies.
Second.
Moved by Stan, seconded by Cheryl. All those in the table who approve, raise your hand. Julie, how do you vote? Well, you've seconded, you see.
I vote yes.
Okay. Motion carries seven zero. I guess you could second a motion and still vote against it. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under operations, Board of Education, election format.
And we do have one speaker on this topic, Levanta Williams. Welcome.
Good evening. President Reeser, Superintendent Thompson, and members of the board, thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to, to give you an idea of how we feel about things that are going on within our district. I am, as well, a 35-year retiree from Wichita Public Schools and a student who went through our public school system. So I think our school system works pretty well. And so as a person also that has served in the Wichita community as a city councilperson for over 10 years, I know that representation is very important, and I think I understand what it's all about as well. So I'm asking the question, does the MAP and does the conversation that you are beginning to be engaged in, is that something that's going to take away our possibility of voting power, or take away some of our voting power? Or is it also going to concern the loss of voting representation in the African-American community? And it could be in any community of color, but I am specifically looking at this situation. We do not want to continue to lose representation on the school board. And we don't want just representation. We want people who want to come into the community and speak, be a part of our district breakfasts, be a part of our neighborhood associations, be a part of those who celebrate within the community. Just come and let us know. I'm here, any concerns? That's what we'd like to see. Come out and talk and be engaged with us. Where, and, and we can even hear the good things that are going on, but we want to make sure that our concerns are being heard. Voting by district gives us more of a possibility of minority representation. Yes, I realize, and you're probably saying to yourself, well, you have to get people out to vote. And we understand that as well. But we need to make sure that there is that possibility of putting someone on that board, and then we will also talk about the voting situation. Positive representation can increase self-esteem within the community. It could help reduce stereotypes of underrepresented groups, and it could also provide validation and support. Representation should be intentional. We should be, we should be saying, does everyone have the same opportunity? And that's what I mean about intentional. We're trying to assist and increase in getting the messages out to people of color, to Black people pertaining to their youth and their youth's education. Sometimes it seems that we're trying to decrease some of those opportunities. People who have the opportunity to represent their identity groups in many sectors may make choices and efforts to use their influence to each others and to the community that it exists in. By providing youth with visible representation of people they can relate to, they can potentially have future generations have the same feeling. I know I was able to look at and emulate a lady by the name of Jo Brown. When Jo Brown was on this board, I was able to say, I can see it and I can be it. So according to a recent article, moving 1,000 Black residents out of a historically Black neighborhood would, would be moved out of that district, and then 3,000 white residents coming in. How does that sound? Move 1,000 Blacks out, bring in 3,000 Whites. That's exactly what the article said. To me, that is not what we want to do. Black and Brown representation should never be the final goal. It should be merely one step toward equity, and voting by district, to me, is equity.
Thank you, Levanta. Um, I'll go ahead and introduce this topic. Julie made this request, and I supported her on it. In 1994, when the school district was concerned that all their board members were elected at large, they came up with a plan, and we, since then, it's been called the hybrid system. The problem with that is that, that in fact has left voting at large for all our seats in place. I commend this board for being willing to take up this issue. Since this policy has been a, a point of contention in our community since 1994, when it was passed, many boards have passed on this issue, and so I commend you for your willingness to take this on. We will not, we will not have a final vote on this tonight, because we do not have language on exactly how the wording of this would be on the ballot. The Wichita Board of Education does not have the authority to change this. We have to put this, and we should, put this on before the voters. So I will open up the discussion on this topic, and hopefully they will get a feel for whether or not we want to proceed on this issue, or whether it is over tonight. Ernestine?
I've been asked, why were we going to have, they felt like this was hurried, and they felt like that some of the MAP things, we were hurried. I knew that the MAP things had to do with that we needed to have it before we had this on the agenda. But is this one, is there a deadline for why we need to have this decided by the end of August?
Yes. To put this on, we do not want to charge the taxpayer for a special election. So we have a November election coming up, and so if we get our questions, question done and submitted to the, is it the election commissioner we'd have to submit it to?
Yes.
If we submit that question before the election commissioner, before August, then they can put it on the November ballot.
Is it, is there a deadline? Patrick, perhaps you know this. Is a deadline for getting it to the election commissioner at the end of August?
The deadline is September 1st.
Oh, well, that's pretty well the end of August.
Thank you, Ernestine. Kathy?
Thank you. First of all, I want to set the record straight, and as one of the comments that was made this evening stated that the Republican Party slated the four candidates in last year's elections. And some of you may not know it, but it was members of the district of 259 that slated us together, and then it took off. So I wanted to make the record clear on that. Another question that I do have, Stan, is why? What advantage and what benefit? I've heard everybody speak, but I'm not sure I understand. If this is such a bad way, why has it been going on for 30 years? I'm confused.
Well, as you, as you know, bad things can happen for many years, until somebody has the courage to try to correct the problem. What the purpose and the, why this is coming up now is because of the fact that, again, this board has been hearing about this problem for decades now. And what we are trying to do, or what I would like to see us do, is clear up the confusion of our school board elections. We are the only entity that has this hybrid system of voting. Basically, all the districts do is nominate, and we still have seven at-large elections. So what this does is create a system, just like the Wichita City Council, like the Sedgwick County Commission, like our state representatives and our state senators. The, the, one thing that brought this more up on my radar completely was the confusion I saw where people told me after the last local election that they didn't vote because they knew their specific board member was not up for reelection. And I said, I tried to explain, well, you missed an opportunity to vote because of the fact that we do vote for our Board of Education members at large. So what the goal is here is to correct a wrong, one. Two, clear up confusion about how our Board of Education elections are run. And also to make sure that your district, my district, anyone's district is not constantly overruled by the representative that they voted for.
So if someone from District 1 reaches out to me, and I'm in District 5, am I going to call the board member from District 1 and say, you need to take care of this, it's in your district?
I appreciate you bringing that up, Kathy, because I think what you'll find is when you go to district-only elections, this Board of Education, along with the city council, along with the county commission, they represent their district, but they have the, they must take the interest of the city, or the county, or their, state legislature's probably a little different, but the city and the county, they keep their interest broad. And you'll see that at the Wichita Board of Education as well, if the voters are to approve this. Because number one, I want to make that clear, too, is that you could put, you could be against this and still put it on the ballot, which, again, I think this is something that, I'm not sure why previous Board of Educations did not want to put it on the ballot, but I think this is a situation where we should allow the voters to decide whether or not we are in line with the way other local boards are elected, or whether or not we want to keep this hybrid system.
One other thing I might mention is, if we take it away from the general election with the city voting, you're taking the voices of the people that have been voting a certain way away. And I'm concerned with the, the feedback that the board and the district might receive, because those people are no longer able to voice what they want. And I'm hearing tonight that having one's voice is very important, and I would agree with that. So I'm concerned that the people on the west side of town might not be able to vote for somebody who is district on the east side of town. So can you help clear that up for me?
Well, yeah, you, you cleared it up yourself.
Okay.
The districts will be able to vote for their representative. And I think what you'll find is, number one, I think you'll find that a clarification will empower all voting people. Confusion is what dilutes our voting rights. It's like one of the speakers, I think Mr. James mentioned today. I, I liked him using the word delight and joy. Once you have a stake in the game of voting for your representative, then that is empowering. Once you get overturned by somebody that is outside of your district, Once you get overturned by somebody that is outside of your district, then that is when you start losing faith and trust in your, in our democracy. So I think this corrects a mistake. Ernestine?
In the last election that I was in, it was before you were on the board, one of the things that was overwhelming to me was the fact that I was going to have to have campaigning in the entire city. The only other office that we have that has to campaign in the entire city is the mayor. And I was thinking about, how do I put a sign up? How do I get? Now, quite frankly, on my teacher retirement and my social security, I could, I was able to come up with enough money for some signs and I can do that again. But one of the things that concerns me is that a citywide election would tend to attract, tends to attract those who can afford it. The person that's just the local person that says, "I care about our schools," they would be discouraged from running for school board if they were going to have to have a citywide campaign. And that's one of the things that I thought, why that, to me, it was, the other thing is, quite frankly, as I've gone to some local groups and spoken, they've all said, "Well, I know the people in my neighborhood. They come to our neighborhood meetings, but I don't know those people on the other side of the city. I just randomly pick it or I heard them say, 'I don't even vote for those.'" So they end up leaving a whole bunch of them blank and not voting because they didn't know the people on the other side of the city. That's enough.
Cheryl?
Yeah, I think what we always want to go back to is that this isn't our vote. I mean, we determine whether or not we put it on the ballot in November. This is the community's vote. And I think it's time that we gave our community an opportunity to tell us what they want. And so I think there's pros and cons on both sides. And literally, I was sitting in the audience way back when, when this was voted in, and there was a lot of discussion at the board table that night. And it was a different time in our community then. And things have changed, like they always do. And I think it's time to put it back to the people. Let them decide what they want to do.
Well, I do see here that in 94, Mr. Williams did move it and it failed. And then Ms. Ferris, Dr. Shodoff, she, and it passed. Has it ever come to the board since 1994? Never?
Never. And it's time.
Wow. I mean, if it's so bad.
I'm sorry.
It's not bad. It's really not bad, Kathy.
The way that it is.
No, I don't, I don't think we want to judge good and bad. I think everybody has different opinions on this. And some believe very strongly that the community should be represented by the person on the board for them and have the one at-large position. Other people disagree with that and think that we should keep it the way it is. I think it's time that we let the community decide that.
And I apologize, I'm with, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm, I just, I think it is confusing when it gets to the general election. I've had to say to a lot of people, "Go vote," because everybody, you can vote for everybody in the general. And no other community, I mean, elected officials in this community are, it's done that way. The city, the county, the state people, all are voted in by their districts. So I think it's just one of those things where it's been long enough. I think it's time we give it back to the community and let them make the decision.
And I apologize. I'll write down everyone's name, just trying to keep the conversation in orderly fashion instead of just two or three back and forth for a while. So if you would raise your hand when you want to speak, I'd appreciate it. Okay, Kathy, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just want to understand that when we vote to put this on the ballot for November and it goes to the people, which I agree, it needs to go to the people. And if it's voted down and it fails, is this board going to try to repeal that?
We can't.
Okay.
Yeah, the people decide.
Okay. So if this was, if this was an item on the ballot and the people of Wichita say, "No, we like it the way it is." I want to make sure our community is going to be okay and that there's not going to be a bunch of upheaval and everything. I just, you know, we all want to get along. We all want to be able to do what's fair and what's right. We do, all of us, whether we agree with each other or not. And it's trying to find that common ground that we can all agree on, one way or the other, so we all have that voice and we all can put the city of Wichita into the direction that we all want it to if we can come to a common voice. So I just want to make sure I understand that. And is this what you meant in February when you pulled me off to the side and said, "What do you think about this? Is this what you were talking about?" I think, I think it was. And I think it's, I think it's your idea and kudos to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Diane?
So I would like to ask if we can open up a room in the district office to have a further conversation with some of the community members here? If we could do that in the next week or two, would that be possible?
I'm sorry, what was the request?
If we could have a room at AMAC to invite community members to have more of a, more of an open-room meeting, because I've got, I've got a fair number of questions for clarification that I would like to understand better.
You can set up any meetings that you want and you can hold it at AMAC if you would like, yes.
Okay. So I'll find a time, if some of you guys would like to stick around afterwards, let's find a time where we can meet this week or next and continue this conversation. I do have a number of viewpoints that, without having a back and forth, that I would like to state today.
That was the intent of this.
There's, yeah. So I went through the school feeder patterns. So there's a document online on our website that shows elementary schools that feed into middle schools that feed into high schools. And then I went and broke those down per district. The elementary schools, the middle schools and the high schools, and then got some colored pencils out and drew which ones fed into which middle schools and high schools. Because I wanted to see which schools, the feeder patterns broke district boundaries. Because we're hearing a lot about representation and I marked out the schools where the feeder patterns crossed a board member's district. And what I did.
It crossed to another board member's district.
It crossed to another board member's district. Sorry, these microphones are a little weird today. And what I did was with those schools, I looked up in our accountability reports, the population of the students at those schools and then also the minority population at those schools. And what we found was, I'm not including magnet schools or schools with special programs like the IB program at East High. I'm just looking at our regular neighborhood schools. And what I found was there's almost 7,000 families that'll be affected that have schools that have feeder patterns that go into another board member's district. And with that, the average minority percent is over 70%. So what that means is if we go to a district-only voting, is overwhelmingly, minority families will lose their voice in voting for the board member that represents their child's school. It is where the family lives, but if your child attends Adams Elementary, their feeder school goes to Coleman or Robinson. That is now, Adams Elementary is in District 1. Coleman and Robinson are in District 2. And then when they go to high school, they go to East High is that feeder pattern. Now, East High is in District 3. So if you live in District 1, you will only vote for your Board of Education member that will represent your child's school in elementary. And then you will not have a voice for the Board of Education member that represents where your child attends school, all of middle school and all of high school. To me, that is very concerning. Because if you have a concern at your child's school, if you go past the president, or the principal at the school, you typically go to your Board of Education member. So now you're not voting on that Board of Education member. See, this is why I want to have a back and forth conversation that we can't have right now.
Yeah, we, let's try to keep it, the conversations at the bench now. Ernestine?
Well, I was thinking about Diane's idea of having a meeting at AMAC that opened, I would like to suggest that we, this is just a suggestion, this is not, not a request putting on the thing, that we have another meeting that is just an open meeting for the community and that all of us attend, not just individual board members set up a meeting, but that we have a, even before the meeting at the end of August. Because I do hear that in order for this to be on the ballot, for us to let the people decide, we have to decide by September 1. So is there any way that we could perhaps have a community meeting at AMAC that, where we all show up and listen to people give their points of view? I think that's probably, needs to have a board vote, I suspect, but I'm just wanting to know if it's even a possibility before I make a motion to do it. Is it?
That was going to be my recommendation. I mean, each of us are going to be talking to constituents and we do every day anyway. So now that this topic is now going to be presented to the public, there will be neighborhood associations that have meetings about this. Sounds like Diane's setting one up to have one. And it's not, again, it's like Cheryl says, we're not, we gotta, can't lose track. We are not voting or expressing, I've got a personal opinion on this, but all I'm voting on tonight, or hopefully late August, is to put it on the ballot. It is not, it's not to basically try to influence anyone to vote a certain way or other, so.
You're not putting your thumb on the scales.
Correct. I'm just putting it on the ballot. And I think it clears up some confusion. And Diane, your argument about feeder buildings is that we do not, Coleman Middle School does not vote for you. The people in that district vote for you and that, and they always have the at-large person to vote at-large. So it's kind of the whole argument, you can have it, the argument of that we're not going to pay attention to all the school, all the schools, or we're only going to pay attention to the schools in our district. We can't really have it both ways. No one's getting disenfranchised. I think that's kind of a confusing issue to bring up, to bring up. We're not changing any school boundaries. We're not, all we, if the voters approve this, the only thing this does is makes it clear that our elections are similar to city council election and city council elections so that we don't have the confusion of saying, "You're nominated in the general, in the primary," but we still have a at-large, we all seven at-large elections. So I just wanted to clear that one up.
Cheryl, before I ask you, let me see if Julie had a comment, because I've had a chance to everybody had a chance to speak. See if Hazel wants to say something too.
Diane, I'm not particularly have a comment, but I do have a question of clarification.
Okay.
So let's, let's say, let's just give the possibility that we put this out to the voters and let's, let's just say that the voters decide they, that they want to go to district-only elections. So if I, so then whoever runs for a particular district and they win the seat on the board for that district, is it correct that that individual is still responsible to the entire school district and making decisions based on all of the children in the school district? And that the changing of elections does not change the fact that fact? We don't, with the change of elections, switch to representing, making decisions that favor the district we're representing over the other districts in USD 259?
That would be correct. Just like I visited latchkey programs this last spring in Kathy's district, even though that was not my boundaries, I can't imagine that this board would ever get to the point where there's some invisible line that we won't cross over because it's no longer in our district. Plus, we also have, again, we'll always have that at-large vote for one-seventh of our board. Cheryl?
Thank you. I think I just want to make that, because I'm the at-large representative on the board right now. And, and I feel like, first of all, all of us represent all the kids. And I, I don't think we want to send a message that we'll ever not do that. But what, what the, when you have the problem of a parent that sends their, and we have this happen all the time because of our magnet schools. Our magnet schools draw from everywhere and they cross boundaries all the time. They vote for a district and they have that as their representative, but the at-large position steps in when my kid doesn't attend the school in my district. If you have a specific question, the board has the opportunity of having the at-large person to be the person that you can talk to. So I think, I think we, we really tried to cover that, or the law did, actually, this is how it's set up in the law, that, that, that at-large person can cross those boundaries and represent anybody, anywhere, at any time. You know, I, I just feel like it's time we gave this back to the people and let them tell us what they want us to do.
Hazel, do you have any comments or concerns or questions about it? And then I'll give everybody a chance, because I don't think you've had a chance to speak. And then I'll go give a chance to everybody to speak one last time if they feel like it.
I think, I feel like, so I feel like if I have a child that is in District 6, where I live, and goes to school in District 1, that I should have a choice of who represents my child. And so I, I support citywide voting.
And do you support putting it on the ballot?
Diversity, oh, I support putting it on, that's, well, no.
So, so you do not support putting it on the ballot?
No.
Any last comments? Again, there's no action tonight, but I want to give everybody a chance to, because obviously we're going to have a lot of community meetings before August 22nd. And then we will also have final wording for you to look over to see if we're actually going to put it on the ballot or not. Start with you, Diane. Any final comments or concerns that you would like to express?
I stand by my position on, on the school board members being able to represent the students for the parents, whatever school they go to. I feel fairly strongly about that. I understand the concerns that, some of the concerns that have been brought up today. There's been a lot of chatter about people winning their district and losing their citywide election. I would like an example of that. But, yeah, I'm going to move on from that.
Thank you, Diane. Ernestine, do you have any final comments?
I don't have any final comments.
And I don't either. I just think it's, it is, it is important that we put this on the ballot and let the community have a ongoing discussion on this. Kathy?
I did think of one thing.
Oh, Ernestine, go ahead.
I do think it is important that we have another meeting in between now and the 25th of August to have, if we can set that up, I would think to, with all of us there to hear. Because one of the problems with the neighborhood meetings is that I will hear from this little group over here and someone else will hear from that group. I would like to make it so that we're all hearing some of the same arguments and same voices.
Kathy?
Thank you. I do agree that the community needs to have a voice, absolutely. I think that every person in the city of Wichita has the right to exercise their constitutional privilege of voting in every election. Having said this, I find it uncanny and very awkward that it is happening now, right before another election, as Mr. Ritchie said, with three members of this board that are up for reelection. I wish you guys would have done this last year and I would not have had to do so much walking and I would not have had to buy so many signs. You know, but you know, your return is high when your investment is deep. And I invested deeply last year in my campaign. And I also campaigned only in my district number five. I did not go out of my district. Others did that for me. Others... Others educated the community on, this is what you can do. This is what your options are. And they educated the community into the method of election for last year's election. So again, I just find it uncanny that it's happening now, right before an election, when three of our members are up for reelection. And that's all I have to say.
And Julie, I apologize, I skipped over you. Do you have a final comment that you'd like to make?
My only final comment is that I, I think it's for the voters to decide and not the board members. So, um, so I just support putting it out for a vote.
Thank you, Julie. Cheryl?
Uh, I think I've stated what I believe.
Hazel, you get the last word.
I have nothing to say.
Okay. Okay, Diane.
So, um, I guess one of the reasons why I'm, I'm not in favor of this is because I really do want to focus on academic outcomes as the main thing that this board spends time talking about. This seems like a political move. It seems like a great distraction on the time that we're spending not talking about academic outcomes. I'm not quite sure what benefit this is going to provide the district. And to just be frank, at last year's election, we were accused of bringing politics into this. And I do not feel we have brought politics to this board table at all. We have done homework, we do extensive amount of work. This has turned into almost a full-time job, doing the background, the research, talking to people, finding out how all this stuff works, and understanding what we are doing here. And none of that involves politics. It involves a lot of conversations, it involves a lot of internet searching, it involves a lot of research, and a lot of meetings with people. It is a lot of work, it is very time-consuming. I'm happy to do it, but it's not political. It is literally trying to understand the best interest and make the best decisions for all of the students within this district, while also representing of, all of our, all of our parents, all the taxpayers, trying to find that line between being good stewards of the things that we've been given, whether it be the facilities around this district, or the money that we're given from the taxpayers, to also providing a good education and atmosphere for the students in this city. So that is why I view this as more of a distraction, because it's been in place for 30 years. It's not broken, we do not need to fix it. We need to look at academic outcomes.
And I'll ask you the same question I asked Hazel. So do you support putting it on the ballot?
No.
Obviously, you would vote no on, on the question, but you don't, you also do not support even putting it on the ballot?
I do not. But I do support having further conversations to help understand, and you're welcome to change my mind.
All right, thank you, Diane. And thank you, I appreciate the board's patience on that. That's kind of an unwieldy topic. But I do think that the board is, I commend the board for willing to take on this difficult, because many, many Board of Educations passed on this topic for decades. So I, I do appreciate the board's willingness to at least discuss it. And we'll have this discussion again in our last meeting in August. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Finance, 2022-23 Budget Authorization to Publish Notice of Hearing.
All right, we are nearing the end of this enormous project of dealing with our budget. So we are here to move to the next phase of our proposed budget for the fiscal year '23. And I am going to introduce my colleague.
Susan Willis, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you.
It's been a minute. Good evening, President Reeser, Superintendent Thompson, members of the board. As Superintendent said, it's been a bit of a journey. And we are on the last leg. This, tonight's presentation is actually new territory. So I will beg the board's indulgence that it may not be as perfectly aligned to how we might want this to go in the future. There might be a different approach we want to take as we move past this first year of looking at needs assessment and state assessment requirements that are new from the 2022 legislative session. But we're going to give this a pretty good go, and then we'll make some notes and take some feedback for future years. So let's go, let's go ahead and dive right into the requirements for the sub-bill, for House Bill 2567. So this is the bill that was new in the legislative session that did put some additional requirements on boards of education as they develop and ultimately adopt a budget for the fiscal year '23. And we're going to break it down into the two sections. The first is concerning needs assessments. And then we will talk some of the requirements around, some questions around state assessments. The three requirements around needs assessments are, each year, the board shall conduct an assessment of the educational needs of each attendance center in the district. Assessments shall be published on the school district's website. And the minutes of the meeting where the board adopts the budget, those minutes must include that the needs assessments were provided to the board, the board evaluated the assessments, and the board explained how the board used the assessments in the approval of the district's budget. So that's a lot, even just on the first item, so we're going to break it down. The first requirement, each year, the board shall conduct an assessment of the educational needs of each attendance center. Now, this particular requirement has been part of Kansas Statute 72-1163 for many years. So this is not really new. However, the formal process is new as far as the documentation that the Kansas Department of Education wants included in the assessment process. We have done needs assessments in various forms for years. And we have pulled data as we develop the budget every year. We look at class sizes, we look at the movement and the programs at each school. This is nothing new. There is a process, and there has been a process, for schools to request budget increases and explain their needs. And those come up through a process and are reviewed, and are reviewed again, and are reviewed for a third time. And, and then are assessed in the picture of what is available as far as new budgetary availability. So that's nothing new for us. However, we are formalizing that process. And we did try as closely as we could to match what now is out on the KSD website. Now, that final guidance was not available until the end of May. We actually created our own form in early May so that we could present that to our school principals and get that information back, because we're building the budget in May. So waiting until late May is a bit of a problem for us. So ours looks just slightly different. The format was an online tool we used. But for the most part, the major points that KSD has on its guidance, we've included in our needs assessments. A lot of the, the kind of the, the demographic data, we pulled centrally. Because again, that's a, this is a lot of work. This is not something we wanted to push down to schools to pull all their own demographic data when we can easily pull that centrally. So we did, and we, we did provide some instruction, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. The, the next requirement, after the fact that the needs assessment was given, and we gave it, and we gave it to school principals, again, not necessarily, the timeline we would have preferred, we'll do it much earlier when we do it the next time. It won't be May, it will be much earlier in, in, probably early spring, so that schools can actually get a little bit more engagement activity around that, because that's something we did not have a lot of time this year to, to go out and get because of the late notice of these changes. So the other requirement is that the needs assessments must be published on the school district's website. And they are there. So if anyone would like to go and look through their particular school's results, they just have to click on the District Budget link at the bottom of the webpage. On the left side of our menu, it will say 2022-23 Needs Assessments. Click on that, and then pick your school. And you should be able to find it right now, it should be out there. And then the additional requirements, needs assessments have been provided to the Board of Education. We provided every board member a collection of both the needs assessment per school and the state assessment results per school for the 2020-21 school year in a bound book, and we delivered that to you via US mail, the week of 7/11. We did additionally provide some instruction on the data gathering process, and basically, the information I just explained as far as how principals received the information, filled out an online tool. We provided that same instruction, so you knew the methodology of how those needs assessment came to be, so that you could evaluate those accordingly. And then the, kind of the bigger question about how does the board use the needs assessment in the approval of the district's budget? So kind of the first thing we want to talk about is, obviously, if you look through every individual school's responses, you find a variety of needs. Because every school is just a little bit different, of course. Elementary, middle, high, special programs, they all have their unique needs. But they do have some common issues, some common themes of, of barriers or challenges, or areas that they believe they need some assistance with. So that was the first thing we wanted to look at as we went through those needs assessments, were what were kind of the big themes or big areas that we wanted to kind of pull out and share with the board, and how we kind of addressed it within the budgetary process. So that's where I want to start with first. One of the questions we asked were, was are the school-based needs of foster care students being met? Because that is a challenge that we have in our district. We have a fairly high foster care population. The primary response was that 80% of our schools felt generally that we were meeting the needs, 20% struggle. And it's probably, when you look at the, the individual school data, it's those schools that have higher populations of these particular students. 16 out of the 19 responses that, that indicated they had needs primarily listed additional community supports as their primary need. So as we're going through this, you're going to see that not everything is a financial challenge. In fact, the majority of them are not financial challenges. There's other issues at play. Or at least, it's not our financial challenge, it might be someone else's financial challenge. The other piece to keep in mind is that we ourselves are experiencing significant hiring challenges. Especially when you're looking at the hard-to-fill positions for certified staff. Some of our child support, child study support teams, your school psychologists, your counselors, your social workers, positions that typically work with these populations, some of those we've struggled to fill. And then again, just the classroom teachers have been struggling. We'll go through, it's not just limited to certified, we have hiring challenges in all areas. But again, how are we meeting, at least to try to address this 20%? A lot of it right now is being handled through ESER strategies and some other available state grants. So our mental health intervention team grant, we've expanded that. We have included the eight additional behavioral health liaisons. This is one of the areas where we were not filled last year with all of those spots. But as we come into fiscal year '23, I believe we have a, a pretty close-to-full boat here. So that should help tremendously as far as getting supports in the right areas. Additionally, same issue with some of the ESER-funded counselors, school psychologists, and social workers. Again, took us a little bit to ramp up on some of the new positions that we added. We're now, I think, in a better place as far as having some of those positions that were open a little bit longer last year filled. Not, not perfect, but we're, we're better. So we should see, hopefully, some, some attention being paid to some of those needs based on the fact that we've put some additional resources into play. Another theme was technology. This is one actually where we've done remarkably well. The board has been very supportive of technology advancements and use of ESER funds and other funds for the last few years. We are continuing to replace old and obsolete technology. The board approved the interactive flat panels tonight. That's one of those obsolescent programs. A lot of our technology is addressed within the capital outlay program. That particular line item in capital outlay, almost, almost $15 million is allocated for technology, software, and hardware in capital outlay. And additionally, the IST department also has a supplemental general fund budget as well. So we are putting funds into place that can be used to continue to address the 7% of schools that are saying they're, they still have technology needs, probably broken smart boards that have been waiting on some decisions for us to continue to move forward. So we are addressing those, and we have put money into those budget lines to continue to work through those issues. Another theme is there adequate personnel staff to meet the needs of schools under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act? So we use our general fund, our weighted fund, at-risk funding title budgets to ensure that the schools have the necessary resources, particularly related to FTE. We do look at class sizes, we do monitor that. I've shared with the board before, I look at every single replacement hire myself to make sure that we, we are utilizing the FTE resources to the best we possibly can in the right places. However, the hiring challenges continue to be a problem. And what I think you saw on some of those needs assessments were not necessarily they didn't have the, the budget for the position, but they don't have a person in the spot. And that continues to be a, a growing challenge. And that's, again, not limited to teachers, that's our, that's our specialists, that's our paraprofessionals, bus drivers, nutrition services, custodial, and even clerical staff has been a challenge. So this is, this is a real, a real barrier right now for us, not having a full boat of positions filled, especially as we come into the start of the fiscal year. But the budget for them exists. It's, it's there, it's ready to go. We are constantly looking at innovative ways to try to attract people to us. I think you'll hear a little bit tonight in, in the superintendent's comments about some of the transportation challenges. But we are, this is not something we're just sitting back going, what are you going to do? We are all departments, this is an all-hands-on-deck problem. We are all looking at this issue. We're, we just talked about it this morning in our leadership meeting. How can we push different types of initiatives into play that might attract more workers to our, to our doors? So that is, but that is a challenge, but it's not necessarily a fiscal challenge. The, the resources are there. Common themes related to the needs for repairs and adjustments to existing space. You can see by this particular circle that this one, this one's a little bit more out of balance. And this is not a great surprise. Again, remember that our district buildings, on average, are 60 years old. So we have needs related to facilities and aging facilities and wanting to do different things with different spaces with limited capital outlay dollars. Because again, we just told you, we have money set aside for, for technology in capital, we have money set aside for safety initiatives in capital, there's money set aside for, for capital improvements, but it is, it's limited. And we are making other types of major repairs. East High, a few of those other types of, of kind of bigger-ticket items continue to bring pressure on this fund. What have we done? Obviously, we do have a fairly large, and we covered this two weeks ago, a fairly large capital outlay budget for this year. Some of that is obviously to address these ongoing issues, particularly as the items from the 2,000 bond issue continue to age out. There is also a significant chunk in the general fund. We pay for building grounds and maintenance out of the general fund. And then this particular year, we're going to focus a lot of ESER III on those facilities projects. So we are going to make a, a good run at some of these issues. Are we going to get this circle to 75-25? Probably not. But we will make, we will make, we will make ground, right? We will gain some ground here. But this is a big, big issue for the board that probably needs some deeper discussion over the next six to 12 months. And then we just asked in general, as far as the school- And then we just asked in general, as far as the schools identifying different barriers, we asked them, can these barriers be overcome with resources? And you know, generally, the, you know, 70% said, well, you know, yes, they can. But again, they're not necessarily all financial in nature. But again, that need for, for more child study team members to address the needs of those students that are exhibiting, you know, some sort of issue, we're addressing that through the ESER funds, we are addressing them through Special Ed. We are still, again, hiring, looking at those hiring difficulties and trying to think through different solutions to push some more resources into these areas. Para-training was brought up on several occasions. We have improved that through para-onboarding. We did a paid special education summit for pares this past summer. And this is one of those areas that we are actually doing some ongoing work. We're not finished in this area, but there are resources available to continue to work on training pares, because again, that is an important role that the para plays in the classroom. So we want them to be as prepared as they can be. So training is one of those areas. You'll continue to hear more about those different kinds of initiatives that we're working through. More parent and community engagement. That, that's important. You can see some of this work happening in title. You can see this work happening in the ESER funds, particularly ESER funds that are at the, allocated at the school-based level, and that we have been actively working on site council re-engagement. That kind of fell off during pandemic. So we've been really, we're going to do some presentations to, to principals about getting, getting those site councils back up and running so that we have that feedback from families, whatever the issues might be, and certainly budget is one of them. And then attendance. Attendance is a complex issue. We have struggled with attendance issues for many years. We won't fix it in one budget year. There, again, there are funds available, but this is, we are in a constant, ongoing evaluation of, of how do we improve attendance through the various types of infrastructure we could put into place? And it's just been a struggle, and it will continue to be a struggle because it's a very complex, multifaceted problem, and one solution's not going to fit all. But it will, we'll continue to have work done in this area. So I wanted to share, as we kind of took those themes and we took existing, the existing major programs, we have made, you know, funding allocations in this year's budget based on all of that feedback. The primary driver in the budget right now is the federal grants. That is the biggest proportion of our budget. It kind of skews all our normal percentages because it's such a high number, because we've budgeted all of the ESER III money, even though we know we won't spend it, but it's all embedded in the budget, and then we'll carry it over into the following year, whatever we don't spend, but it's there. So it's the preponderance of, of the budget, and it's 100% restricted, right? It's, all the federal money has a purpose, and we have to follow the federal rules in, and how we spend it. Special education is then the next item. It's 53% restricted, followed by just right under is secondary education and then elementary education. So you can see the primary academic programs are the primary areas where we have funding allocation. This year, capital outlay is pretty high, but we just kind of shared with you that, part of that rationale, which is we are, we have a lot of ESER projects running, and then we have some additional capital outlay to support those projects, to get as much of that footprint done as we can while ESER funds are available. Capers, that's the pass-through money, but we have to record it on the books. So you can see it's a pretty good section of our budget. It's 100% restricted, then the nutrition services, facility services, bond and interest, transportation, student support, bilingual ESOL program, utilities, career and technical ed, and then all other programs, and there's about 18 of them, are 0.5% or less on average. So they're, they're not huge percentages. I just left them off, but I'm happy to provide them if you'd like to see them. We will have our custom budget at a glance document, I think, here. I don't know that I'll have it for the August 22nd meeting, but we are close to being done for it. We decided we wanted to get on it early, so it should be ready here, not too far down. And it will have all programs listed. So as we put that all together, we do have a new wheel for you, and it's 86% of our operating budget is in direct support of students. Again, the percentages are a little bit different than, than they were last year, and that's primarily because ESER is impacting a number of our operating areas. But for the most part, I believe we were at 87.4 last year. So we're, we're, we're close, we're in line with, again, the preponderance of our budget being towards instruction. And then you have a little bit higher in the nurses, social workers, counselors, because we've put a few more resources there. School supports. The rest of what's not considered to be in support of students would be your facilities, maintenance, and people like me, business support services. A lot of that actually is technology that lives in that business support line, so that's where you're seeing some of those greater percentages there, too. Yeah, when you look at the wheel, the black on the left side is facilities, maintenance, and then business support. Those would be considered not part of what's in direct support, although I kind of would argue I'm kind of in direct support. But they, we don't, we, we try to be fair and not include things that are not in the classroom. But we want, we do, we do want to share, we can do anything with this budget, but we cannot do everything with this budget. There are limited resources, and I, I've used this little Pac-Man that probably dates me a little bit, but the wants, needs, and really the barriers are eating up resources. And really, it's, financial is not the primary resource right now. It's time, it's people. Those are probably the two biggest resources that we are in dire need of, more time, more people, and the ability to have an influence in some respects. What can we, what can we change within the school process versus what needs to happen in our community, or what needs to happen in homes, or what needs to happen with students? Some things we can influence, some things are, are a little bit beyond our, our ability by the budget to actually, you know, affect change. Within the school budget, so this is another thing I wanted to bring up before we pause a minute to have some discussions around needs assessment, is there is some flexibility for a school to address a, a new school year problem? Because again, remember, these principals did needs assessments in May. They're going to have different students in front of them in August. So they may have different needs that come up that they didn't know about when they, then they did the needs assessments earlier in the spring. They certainly have funds available to them to address within their own authority, but they also have the ability to request some changes or additional items through their particular chain of command. And we will address those certainly as they come up, because that's what we do. If, again, if we have a student situation where we need additional para support, we provide that. We are constantly kind of listening and reacting to needs as they come up, because again, we are not a manufacturing company that makes widgets. We have different needs, and they change with every single student pretty much daily. And we address those as to the best of our ability, but again, we can't do everything. So my point here is, I believe we have set your budget and allocate it to the best that we can for success for the fiscal year '23 school year. You certainly could instruct us, if you would like, to take a percentage away from one and reallocate it to a different area. Doesn't impact necessarily the overall budget. But again, as we get into the, some of the state assessment data, you're going to see that doesn't necessarily help you, because you have needs in all of those areas as well. So I will pause, as we've just covered those major areas related to needs assessments, to see, based on the information we've provided to the board, the information I just provided to you as far as how we use the information to allocate the budget, if the board has any comments or wants to have any discussion or provide some additional instruction to us on any changes.
Kathy?
Awesome presentation. I've told you, you always make it look easy for me to understand. You just mentioned that we can take from one and give to the other. Is that throughout the year or like right now?
So the, when you set your, and I may not be answering your question, so if I don't, come loop back around with me.
I might not be asking it right.
When you set the, the budget as far as the legal max per fund, that we don't change. We can't move fund to fund without republishing the budget. But within a particular fund, so if elementary is allocated at 11% of the budget and 42% of that lives in the general fund unrestricted, and for whatever reason, maybe we're not seeing K to three students come back, and maybe we see an influx of middle. It is possible if we had some, maybe some vacancies in elementary that we, and we were able to get some middle school teachers, I don't know exactly where we'll find them, but if we could, we could actually shift that, some of those lines into the secondary general fund budget, and that would not be a problem. And we have done that as far as if there has been a program that might be over because of something unforeseen, and yet we have another program within the same fund that's underspending, we can, we can shift those around. And really, that doesn't even involve the board, because the overall max of the fund is exactly how you adopted it.
And that would happen throughout the year?
Yes.
The fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? I just would like to say, thank you very much for giving us this building needs assessment book. It, it looks overpowering, and it really is, but it has wonderful information in it about every single school that was provided by the schools and the district. So it made it very clear to me that we have many needs in this district, but we are also meeting a lot of needs. I was actually pleased with the charts that you produced, because it says, we don't want to ignore anybody, but by far, the bulk of our people are relatively happy, feel like they're getting what they need and able to help kids. So, thank you. Thank you very much. Ernestine?
Just to, what's the word? Ditto what Cheryl was saying. I really also appreciate this chart, and I want to tell you that this round chart has really been a help to me. And as I go into the community and see groups, when they comment on how much we're spending on something or another, I'm able to have this to just make it so clear that, I know it seems like a lot of money, and it must be, you know, the whole budget for the whole district, but we are such a large district that it turns out I was able to show on a round graph like this, a pie graph, it's just a small amount. Thank you for doing that. It's really been helpful for, not because people aren't, they aren't complaining, they're more like, are, do we have enough money for such and such? And I'm able to show, yes, yeah, thank you.
I'm seeing no other questions, so go ahead with your presentation.
Before I move to the next session, I would be remiss, obviously, if I didn't express our appreciation to our school principals for doing their part of that work. It was somewhat of a last-minute ask, and our principals, as they always do, rose to the challenge. Additionally, our budget director, Addie Lowell, and her staff, phenomenal amount of work done related to these new requirements, so shout out to, to them as well. Okay, the second part of that particular House Bill 2567 is related to some requirements around state assessments. It requires boards of education to review the state assessments provided, that we provided to you with the needs assessments via U.S. mail, and it requires the board to answer three questions. The first question is, what barriers must be overcome to have all students achieve proficiency above Level 2? And we provided you data from the 2021 school year on the performance of state assessments at each attendance center. Those are also available online, same kind of band at the bottom of the webpage under accountability reports. And those are updated once a year, typically in December or January. Once we have finalized state assessment data from the previous year, the State Board of Education pulls all that data actually and uploads those, and we link to their reports. So those, that's why we're using 2021 data, because it was final. The 2122 state assessment data is not final yet, so that's why we don't use it as part of the budget process. But what we did is, based on feedback from those needs assessments, based on some, some work that we were able to pull from various stakeholders, and really a lot of input from board members, we took a lot of the barriers and we tried to categorize them in kind of bigger themes, if you will, because again, you can look at one of these, and I'll just pick student poverty. Under poverty, you could come up with a whole lot of specifics on how poverty impacts student performance on a state assessment. You could, maybe the student didn't eat breakfast that morning because of poverty in the home. Maybe they didn't have a way to, to get to school, because they live within two miles, but they were watching a sibling and couldn't get to school. So there's, poverty is a big umbrella item, and there's a lot of things that live underneath that particular umbrella. But again, we probably didn't want to be here for the next three or four days discussing all the, the barriers specifically, so we tried to do these major themes. So you can see, we, and we kind of put them into four categories, student, staff, family, and community, because there are barriers that relate to how well a student will perform on a state assessment in all those areas. Students in particular are impacted by poverty, we talked about that a little bit, feeling disconnected. We've, we've have heard this time and time again, that students have felt disconnected or not motivated, not understanding how doing well on a state assessments applies to anything in their lives. Mental health issues, attendance, language and cultural differences, and how those relate to how they interpret information on a state assessment, and just general distractions, social media, their iPhones, whatever. There's a whole laundry list of things that might come into play related to performance on a test where a student is distracted and doesn't do as well as they're capable of doing. Staff, certainly, student behavior, we've talked a lot about that, Ms. Lewis indicated the behavior work group is working on a few of those items, but that continues to potentially be a barrier on how well a student might perform. Lack of the necessary supports, whether that's, I would hope it's not supplies at this point, but there are other supports in the classroom that teachers need, and if it's missing, that can impact a student's ability to perform on, and show the, the information they've learned on a test. Staff, staff health, staff attendance, certainly, we've seen the impact of, of what happens when staff are unable to come to work because of illness these past few years. And then other lack of needed supports, maybe from families, community, other areas. And then the expectations of student success, that's, that's a lot of pressure. And again, not necessarily everything is related to the, the teacher's instruction of that student. Again, you, you see all those other columns that come into play, but there's a lot of, a lot of emotion tied to a teacher being evaluated on that particular line item of, how well did your students perform on a test? And then that student-teacher disconnect, that again, we're trying to repair, especially this year, where, which I believe, you know, connectiveness and is part of, you know, one of our major themes for this year, being connected, that's an area we're working on. And then family, poverty, again, those same issues that the student faces, families face as well. And then our community needs, which again, we alluded to a little bit, lack of supports for families and needs, even just some misinformation what happens in a classroom. I mean, we're always inviting community members, come, sit in one of our classrooms and, and see what's happening and understand the, kind of our world. And then let's have a meaningful conversation about that. Maybe some unrealistic expectations of what schools are doing. It seems like more and more responsibilities are put on school systems to be the safety net that, because other, other resources don't exist or they're underfunded. And then just in general, just the issues related to how things operate today, so we'll leave that at that. I will stop for a minute on this slide and ask if this represents for the board a good summary of how you would want to answer this question, if I'm missing any of the major barriers that you see that you would like added?
Ernestine?
I would just like to add, language and cultural differences under family also, because that to me...
It is. It's under there.
Oh, forgive me. It was such a good idea.
It was. Might have been your original idea.
Okay. You can always come back to me if you think of something here before the end of my presentation.
Nobody else wants to put their...
Okay. The second question, what budget actions, recommendations, or reallocation should be taken to address and remove the barriers? We just spent the first half of our presentation talking about the actions we've taken based on the needs assessments, which do address some of those barriers, not, maybe not all of them, but some of them. There are budget allocations, particularly this year, at the school-based level with ESER funds, that can allow schools to address some things particularly related to family engagement and those type of activities that might help to, again, those cultural and language barriers, the connectiveness, those type of things, there are funds available for that. Many of those barriers we talked about, not financial, not anything I can change in a budget allocation, we may not even have the ability to solve without it being a, a larger community conversation. But from my seat, I feel the budget is allocated to the best we can do to address the barriers we've identified in a fiscal year, but I'm very open to the, the board correcting me on that assumption and, and redirecting me in a different way. Okay, I'm not seeing any additional feedback there. Julie, I'm, I'm assuming you're good? I guess she's good, okay. So, at this point, then we'll not take any further...
I was just like, you know, it's a great presentation, thank you.
So we won't, we won't take any additional action related to the budget reallocation process, we'll, we'll go forward. Obviously, if something is occurring during the course of a school year that needs to be addressed with additional funds, we will address what we need to address. The third question is, if budget actions are implemented, estimate the amount of time it will take for all students to achieve proficiency above a level two. And there's several ways to approach this question. We've chosen two pieces of information to share related to the question. The first is to establish a district goal of having 50% of students performing at levels three and four by the year 2030. Obviously, it, the board has reviewed the state assessments, there is room for improvement. We want to set achievable goals, and we think this first, as we're coming out of our first question and answer related to state assessments, we think this is a, a good first goal.
Ernestine?
Superintendent, am I correct that a level two is considered grade level? So if we get 50% that are above grade level, then we would have at least some that would be on grade level if level two is grade level?
I'm going to, I'll say this. Number two used to be considered proficient. Two and above was proficient. The, the State Board of Education made an adjustment to their cut scores, and then two became not proficient. So, most of our students reside in two. Many of those students go on to college or trade and are successful young folks. However, if you were to look at that student through the lens of the state assessment at a level two, some people would consider that failing. So, that's your, that's the answer.
Okay, the, the other, the other item to kind of note related to the one, two, three, and four is, there's a lot of room between two and three that's not really addressed in this question, because we do have a number of students that perform higher than two, but they're not yet at three, so they're counted as two, and that's, that's a little bit of a problem that's not related, or not indicated in this question. So again, it's kind of a, part of our approach on, we're going to try to improve those that are scoring at three and four. And then the second part of that goal is to decrease the number of students at level one.
And that's where you want to be. You want to get those students out of the ones into two. That's our number one goal, really, honestly, is to get kids from one to two. That's where this, that's where we're pushing.
So that second goal we've got stated, the district goal is to decrease the percentage of students performing in level one by between 1% and 5% annually.
Diane?
How did we come to the district goal being 50% of the students performing at levels three and four by 2030?
To be honest, it was just, uh, just saying that we should be at some point, half of our students at three and four. So, it was no mathematical formula or anything like that. We just looked at the current state and said that we realistically, what we could do, and the students that we knew that we could get to move to that three and four, we could get there by that amount of time. But again, we, our focus really is getting those kids from the ones to the twos.
I guess I have a couple of thoughts on that.
Okay, I'd be happy to hear them.
I, I'm concerned that it's eight years out to get to half, because that really puts our students who are currently entering fifth grade, they would be graduated by then, so it'd be fourth grade and under, would be really that cohort group for that goal of 50%. My other comment would be, if we have an increase from people at a lower, and I don't, I don't remember the, all of the statutes of the two, the standards there and that, so I'll have to go back and look at this, so I'm kind of, gonna make this comment a little bit of ignorance.
Nope.
So clarify. But if we have a lot of students residing in the twos, can we, as a district, break that out into like, two to .4, and then .49, and then 2.5 to 2.99, to give a distinction and show increase and improvement?
We've tried to do that. We talk about this all the time, I know Gil's looking at me like, because that's the question I ask Gil. And when they went to the, um, technical folks, the state assessments are, are, you do have students that score like what you just said, but you can't say how they make progress, because it doesn't link, those scores and those numbers and the skills don't link to the next, uh, grade level assessment like that. So you're really not going to be looking at progress, per se. It's weird, and we can get, we could actually come back and talk real granular with you about that, but it's, because I thought, it's just saying, it's simple to me, you, your kids are at two, then you could just say, "Oh yeah, they went from a 2.1 to a 2.3," and that makes sense to me, but it's not the way that the state assessment is built to be able to show growth on a state assessment, because there are different skills, there are different things, so you're not showing growth, you're showing a, state assessments show you a point in time with specific skills that they want to measure. When they get to the next grade level, they're doing the exact same thing, so you can't say, "Well, how did they make with different skills?" So you can't say that they made growth in multiplication, because that might not be what they're being assessed on in the next grade level. So you can't show growth on a state assessment, that's why these state assessments are kind of wonky, and that's why we ask people to look at the growth that we really are making with our kids on our formative assessments, because we really are showing kids that are making growth. But when you test a kid at one point in time on different skill sets, it's hard to show growth on a state assessment.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Susan.
So was there anything I needed to adjust related to these two responses? Okay. Okay, so we've covered the House Bill 2567 requirements. Now we're getting back to kind of the regular items to adopt a budget for, for, in two weeks. So again, I'm giving you the summary of the overall budget here, this is our, um, original adopted budget from last year compared to what we're proposing for this year. This has not changed from when we presented to you in July, so our overall budget increase is just shy of $5 million. Again, our budget is still being significantly impacted by federal pandemic relief funds. And again, the, we're, we're, we didn't make any budgetary changes in the last two weeks. We've checked, rechecked, triple-checked, quadruple-checked, we're, we're feeling really good. So our Code 99, which is the notice of hearing that was in the board's appendix, is ready for approval and publication, should the board make, when we make that recommendation to the board, if the board approves. Within that Code 99 document is the mil levies, so I'm going to cover that once again. What we're proposing in the 2223 budget, and I have it broken down by particular mil levy, the general fund again is at 20 mils, that's by statute, we don't have control over that amount. We are recommending a decrease in the LOB from 15.783 to 14.835. The capital outlay, we are recommending we stay at the eight mils, because again, we've talked at length about the needs we have related to facilities. Our bond and interest will go down, 8.483 to 7.679, and then we do want to come up a little bit in special liability, from two, point, .253, so not even a full mil, to .967, so again, we're talking under a mil in this particular, um, fund, which is primarily focused on, um, legal obligations. We're doing our groundwater cleanup work for the service center out of this particular fund, so again, we're trying to capture some funds in this particular area. And so our total mil levy will go down from 52.514 to 51.476, that's a, a decrease of 1.038 mils. The revenue neutral rate I have in that second to the last column on the right, that's what we sent to Sedgwick County, that's what your voters will receive in the mail, so we will be under what we, under that number, which again, is fine, we can be under, we just can't be over that max. So that, that's the history back to 2018, 19, I provided you some additional information back to 2011, 12, so you can continue to see that slow decline we've had related to the overall mil levy, which has been purposeful by the board, but you have that information should you need it. I did also want to provide the board, I believe I told you I would, is provide an update on our upcoming debt service. We have, including principal and interest, we have 277 thou, or 277 million dollars and change left on our bonds, and you can see this year is relatively small, it's small, quote unquote, small, $20 million, and then we're between 40 and 50 million a year until we pay off of the, the bonds in fiscal year 29. So we have made significant progress related to paying down the bonds.
Kathy?
Why is fiscal year 23 so much lower than the other years?
Last year, we actually paid off a series early, and we saved the taxpayers a little bit of interest, and that's why this particular, that series would have matured in fiscal year 23.
Oh, Ernestine?
Are you as mind-boggled as I am with dealing with a budget that is almost a billion dollars? It really is a weight on my shoulders to think of us on this board, but we know that we've got nearly 50,000 students, we know that we've got, what, 7,000 to 9,000 employees, we know that we are big, but when you just look at the numbers, and it's close to a billion dollars, you kind of go, "Ah." That's all, question, how do you feel when you deal with it?
I was, I was looking at the, those percentages for, for special education and secondary, and then I was comparing that to just the general fund in, for districts across Kansas, and those two particular funds or departments alone are, have a bigger budget than 98% of all the districts in Kansas. So, just, this department budgets are much bigger than most districts have to deal with in general. So it is, it's a big, big budget, we have a huge responsibility, obviously, to spend it, spend it well, plan for it well, that's why you employ a, quite a, a few people related to budget preparation, that's why the work, the, the, the background work gets done, so that you can feel comfortable that, for the size of budget, we are, we're on top of it as we can be.
Well, it's an excellent presentation, and, and you've done a, an amazing job, and I really understand it, but it still takes my breath away.
Thank you, Ernestine. So, to recap, our fiscal year 23 budget that we are proposing is based on our new post-COVID baseline enrollment. The 3% increase in the base aid, we covered that in July, is really largely offset by the 4.8% base enrollment loss from fiscal year 21, which is used as the base enrollment for fiscal year 23's, uh, general fund. We are utilizing the full 33% of the general, supplemental general fund authority that we can, again, to provide maximum flexibility in the budget, I mean, to provide the support for those large program costs related primarily to transportation in this particular fund, and technology, those are, and utilities, those are the three biggies that supplemental general fund supports. The mil levy though, overall, is going to decrease, our mil levy is, in the budget, is decreasing by 1.038 mils, and again, all federal funds for COVID recovery are budgeted in fiscal year 23, with the understanding that we know we won't spend it all, but we wanted the maximum flexibility, we'll carry over to next year what we, what we have left. I wanted to provide you a, a visual checklist related to House Bill 2567. The only thing left that we have not done is have the needs assessment information recorded in the, uh, meeting minutes in Au, at our next meeting in August, and I think it's actually 8/22, not 8/20, but that is our last to do. Other than that, we've covered all the, all the requirements of that particular bill. So, that will leave our budget hearing set for August 22nd, and again, all of the related documents will be online when we publish in the paper on Wednesday, and anyone interested can go to usd259.org/budget, or they can click the link at the bottom where you, it will take you right to the district budget page, and the notice of hearing will be published on that page on Wednesday. But certainly, if someone is more comfortable with a paper copy, they can come to district offices, and we will have those available as well.
And the president signs all of this, right?
Correct. And the board clerk.
Yes, sure.
Uh, so with that, administration recommends that the Board of Education establish 6:00 PM, August 22nd of 2022, as the Public Budget and Revenue Neutral Hearing and Budget Adoption for the 2223 budget.
I would move that we approve the publication of the 2223 notice of hearing, and that our annual budget hearing, uh, be set for August 22nd.
I'll second that.
Moved by Stan, seconded by Kathy. All those in favor, raise your hand. Julie, how do you vote? Motion carries 7-0, uh, we look forward to, hopefully maybe the last step on August 22nd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Ernestine?
Will we likely then vote on it on August 25th?
I, Susan?
The 22nd is the hearing, but when do we do the vote?
So, we typically do the hearing and adoption in the same evening, okay.
Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
Thank you. First, I'd like to take the opportunity to just share a couple of updates with you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Kami Abram, a senior at East, I said Abram, but it's Abraham, who is a senior at East High... I said Abram, but it's Abraham, who is a senior at East High School. And Kami made us all WPS proud when she took the stage. I don't know if you all were at the Musical Music Theater of Wichita. She was Dorothy in The Wizard of Oz. And man, oh, man, was she remarkable. She... Man, she needs to be on Broadway, honestly, because she was all that and a bag of chips, as the kids say. I guess they don't say that anymore. That dates me. Dates me. All right. So, next, I'd like to also talk about the beginning of the 2223 school year. Man, we have had an amazing start of the school year. So, we've had the opportunity, and by the end of this week, we would have been in all of the schools in our school district greeting and really celebrating our admin, administrative assistance. Because guess what? They carried us through enrollment and all of the people that helped. So, there could have been a number of people in the buildings. And we've celebrated those folks and paid visits to them to let them know how much we appreciate them. And then we were at Northwest High School where we had this wonderful pep rally. And we had a really great start of the school year, welcoming 400 new teachers and staff to our district and to our family. So, it was really cool there. I'm going to take this opportunity to also talk a little bit about some challenges as we begin the year. Parents and students, please know as you're listening to me that we're doing everything that we possibly can to work with our partners and to support our student transportation to the best of our abilities. However, we are at a staffing shortage with our transportation, which is our partnership we have with First Student. So, I'm going to put a plea out to anyone who's interested. If you want to drive a school bus, we need you. I'm looking at people in the audience. If you... They're putting their... Everybody's putting their hands down. But if you know of anyone, I see you guys back there. If there's anyone... Look at your mom. I was trying to get her... I really would encourage you all to really consider us being able to do that and get our students to and from school safely. We are experiencing a shortage there. And I just want to make sure that the community is aware of that and that we will be communicating with families in the near future just so that everybody understands the challenges that we have. And we will do everything in our power, of course, to ensure that all of our kids get to school safely. With that being said, I cannot wait for the school year to start. It's so exciting to be able to welcome my children back. And we'll be doing that real soon. And we can get lots of hugs and all the things that we missed over the summer. We welcome anyone in our buildings to come back with us to welcome kids back. So, if any of you are interested in going with any of us, we spend significant amount of time out there making sure that everything is starting in a good fashion and that families are welcomed back into our spaces. And you're more than welcome to join us. And that I believe that ends my report.
Thank you very much. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Board of Education Report and Requests.
And if it's okay with the Board, I think I'll start with Ernestine since we know she already has one. Go ahead.
Well, I do have a request, and that's for... And I've put the completion date just said, "early spring." To report back with the student success numbers, and that could be the numbers that we've served, that could be the amount of credits that we've gotten, but just the success rates for our students with accelerated acad... Is it academia? Accelerated academia? I think it is. Academy? Accelerated academy. Okay.
And you want to report on that particular program?
Yes, that particular program was the one that we're doing, kind of the tutoring, to help kids catch up in a hurry.
And I think since it's one particular program, that a report on that should not be, take that much time. So, I think we're okay on that unless anybody feels like that needs a vote.
Well, my thought is, is that if nothing else we could do, account of how many kids got credit, gained credit, earned credit, earned credits.
And it sounds like the Board agrees with you, Ernestines.
And then I wanted to also say that anyone who's out in our public land or anyone who's ever been a student, I would like to urge you to begin to think about reading with 3rd graders. We are trying to get all of our 3rd graders really up to speed. And there's some students that really can do pretty well. But being able to read to you, and all you have to do is just listen to them. You don't even have to read to them. You have to just listen to the student read. So, I encourage you, if you have any time at all that you would volunteer, it's once a week, right? And you get to set the time when it's most convenient for you. And you can work with the principal. And yes, we do need bus drivers. And that's paid. That's good pay.
And can I clarify? The program she's talking about is our Read to Succeed program. And if you call your school principal, they're going to send you some place else. So, if you would call our administrative offices, we could get you set up for the Read to Succeed program. And we will... It's a little quick little training on that and making sure we make sure that the right people are in our spaces with our children. And then you can hit the ground running. This helps with our 3rd grade reading proficiency and particularly our fluency, which then leads to higher performances. So, we really appreciate that, Ms. Ernestine.
Diane.
I'd like a presentation at the next board meeting for the Safe Spaces, Safe Zones, and our Sensitivity Training that was taught to the teachers at the East High during this year's teacher in-service. That was on Friday, August 5. And then also, got another one. I'd also like the Board to make a policy and a statement that directly addresses parental authority.
Let's go ahead. Julie, do you have any board reports and requests? I was trying to give Diane time to write that, but I think we can go on. Okay. Julie?
Yeah, I have nothing, Stan. I have no reports but no requests.
And I... My only is just basically a report. Had a opportunity to stop by several schools for their... during the registration. And I wanted to thank all the staff that was doing such a great job of getting our kids enrolled in school and all the parents that were there and how patient they were at times and how there was... Everyone seems to be very committed to having the start of this school year a very good process. So, thank you so much. Kathy?
Thank you. In July, I had the opportunity to visit Woodland Elementary with their Yes Ability Point Program. Kevin Fish runs an awesome, awesome program. It's in its 34th year, and Cheryl was also there with me. They have a huge impact on students. I was so impressed with that outreach that the school district has. So, that was fun. I have no requests. Are you excited to request? But I do have one more. What? Thank you. But I do have one more report. And it's not lengthy, but it's History 101. "As a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution, I adhere to historical preservation and patriotism. Remembering our presidents is an educational tool to teach our students about this wonderful country of ours and the leadership. President Dwight Eisenhower is just one of these presidents. He has a powerful mark in the history of our country and in the state of Kansas, living in Abilene. He was a five-star general. He served in the war. And he has many accolades that would keep you here too long for me to repeat. So, you can Google him. So, it is for this purpose of patriotism, historical preservation, and ceremonial deism and these purposes only that the Board of Education has decided with relevant judicial decision to permit teachers, in their individual discretion, to display the national motto "In God We Trust" in their classrooms in our district. Building principals will be sent a letter regarding the display of our nation's mottos in district classrooms. To ensure uniformity of implementation and to ensure that principals and teachers understand that the motto may be posted and used only for secular purposes, principals should also ensure the letter be sent to each teacher in their buildings. Posters will be available to pick up in the AMAC building. They are framed, and they are beautiful." Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Thank you. I've been out and about in buildings over this last week or so. And I am so excited about the positivity that I'm picking up in the buildings. Our teachers are back. They're ready to go. They're excited. We're going to have a great school year this year. I'm going to visit schools again through this week as kids are not in buildings yet, but staff is. So, I'm just going in and talking to staff and welcoming them back. And hopefully, we'll be out again once kids are here next Monday. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Hazel?
I'm looking forward to a great school year as well. I have no reports or requests.
Thank you, Hazel. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, New Business?
Seeing none. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Executive Session?
I move the Board recess into Executive Session for purpose of consulting with the Board's attorney, who will provide advice concerning the application of law as it applies to the district pursuant to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, exemption as allowed under KSA 75-4319. And the Board return from Executive Session to this room at 9:00 PM.
I second that.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Julie, how do you vote? Motion carries 7-0. We will return from Executive Session at 9:00 PM. The Wichita Board of Education is returning from Executive Session. No action necessary or needed. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Adjournment?
Moved by Cheryl, seconded by Kathy to adjourn. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 5-0. Diane Albert, Stan Reeser, Kathy Bond, Cheryl Logan, and Hazel Stabler. Thank you.